And it's time for us to begin. Sarah, please take the roll.
Superintendent.
Here.
Bowerman.
Christiansen.
Here.
McIan.
Good evening.
Peterson. Tucker.
Here.
And Tom.
Here.
And if you would all join in saying "Pleasure" please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and our first order of business is the fun stuff we always enjoy. We are Shakopee Schools. A good news item, our student that we're recognizing is Judith Villalobos. Have I said that right?
Yeah.
All right. And also Elijah Nelson, who wasn't able to be here. And we have two of the teachers here for representing that area. Could you speak through what these students have accomplished?
Yeah, sure. So, my name's Alex Gromit.
I'm Bridget Keenan.
Oh, come up to the front, please.
Sure. So Judith and Elijah have been a part of this all-state audition process since earlier, really at the beginning of the calendar year we started preparing. For Elijah would have been etudes on like marimba and he played percussion. And then Judith was preparing singing an art song as well as some scale work. And then in March they made recordings along with, I think we probably submitted over 20 Shakopee choir students and I'm not sure how many on the band side. So we had a lot of students that participated in this and submit those recordings. And then that happens across the whole state of Minnesota and there's thousands of choir kids and thousands of band kids that are trying to get into these all-state ensembles. And we got the good news earlier, before the end of the school year, that Judith was selected for the all-state choir, which really is the highest honor in high school music. And so we're just very proud of her and she'll get a chance in August to go down to Northfield at St. Olaf College. They have a camp where they get together for a week and they learn all the music and sort of develop a sense of ensemble together, which culminates in a recording and a concert. And then they need to perform at Orchestra Hall next school year in February.
Oh wow, that's wonderful.
Yeah, really cool opportunity, so we're really proud of Judith for it that she's done.
Very nice. And is there someone to speak to Elijah's piece in this or otherwise I have some information here?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you certainly can. I guess, we're both choir folks. I know it's similar, so he goes, I think his camp is up at, is it at Concordia in August? And then they have a similar thing where they make a recording and they have a concert sort of for parents and stuff in August. And then in February they'll get to perform at Orchestra Hall as well.
Okay, so another high acclamation from the education of music educators.
And Elijah was selected for orchestral percussion. And if you're a percussionist, which I actually was when I was in high school, orchestral percussion is like kind of the highest pollutant, you know, thing. So it's a big thing.
It sounds bad.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much. Judith, would you please step forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a song.
You want to speak for us? We really appreciate it. Congratulations, we're so excited.
Does she have to sing a solo right now?
Whatever. We're in the middle.
Yeah, she should come in with us.
I think you guys go to the arches.
Yes, in the middle.
There you go.
There you go. There's a picture first.
There you go. There's all kinds of great research about how important music is to education, so we're thrilled for Judith's success and really appreciate the teachers' hard in that.
I bet she has to sing something for us.
That would be lovely, wouldn't it? Did you prepare any music for us? No? No. Okay, thank you so much. There's all kinds of great research about how important music is to education, so we're thrilled for Judith's success and really appreciate the teachers' hard in that.
I bet she has to sing something for us.
That would be lovely, wouldn't it? Did you prepare any music for us? No? No. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, away we go. Number four here, consideration of agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
In a second, okay. All right, those in favor?
Do we have to have discussion on this first?
On the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay, discussion?
I would like to have the agenda amended to include a discussion about the New Vest report.
Are we prepared to add that here?
And then making that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, then let's have some discussion about that.
About adding it?
About, well, yes, I guess the discussion about whether it should be added or not and then if it's added, we have to have the discussion. I'm not sure how this usually would work since we haven't had anything to study ahead of time. I'm not sure that I personally would be ready to discuss it, but.
I agree with you.
I agree too.
I want it brought up and if we table it till the next meeting, I'm fine with that. I just wanted out there that we should be able to talk about just because of what happened on Friday, kind of like all of us getting, including Mike getting blindsided by the paper putting that out there without us knowing. So we should have a public response to it. And if that's in a written form at the next meeting, I'm fine with that also, but at some point we need to discuss this.
Yeah, we do need to have a discussion on this. I mean, a lot of us last November were elected because of our desire to have transparency and, you know, we need to have access to everything so that we can give proper oversight.
I think we can discuss it, it's just we can't say anything. We're in the appeal process, right, to find out if the Department of Administration would allow us to be more open.
Yeah, and I wouldn't even call it an appeal process. It was just a request of the Department of Administration to determine what can be released and what can't be.
So to me, I think the appropriate thing is if we're going to add it to the agenda that we have Mike give us any update based, if there's any update based on the information that's been provided to the board at this time, I'm not sure that there is, but I mean, the district has provided a statement of our position and that we're working with the appropriate people to get this resolved. And I'm not sure there is anything else to talk about at this time, but we can certainly, I'm okay adding it, but I'm not sure there's a lot of discussion to be had at this time, unfortunately.
I mean, we can't, we don't want to violate the law. We all want to be as transparent as we possibly can, but we can't violate the law to do so.
Which is very true.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying let's name names, but, you know, if, you know, employee did this or, you know, if, we need to have an honest discussion about this stuff. Yeah, it's a black eye for the school district, but the sooner we face up to it, have this honest discussion, the sooner we can fully move on.
We know it's a black eye for the school district. I guess I wasn't.
That's just it, we don't know.
Which is why I guess to me it's not a black eye until we know.
Well, I mean, with the former superintendent, that was certainly a black eye.
Oh, absolutely. I'm just not sure in this topic that, I guess I don't even know enough to say.
So I would say if we're going to have a discussion about it, we add it to the agenda and we have that discussion.
No, you mean or?
Yeah, that we vote to either add it to the agenda or not at this time. And if we're going to have a discussion about it, we have it at that applicable time on the agenda.
Okay. Now, earlier we had a first and a second to accept the agenda and then we had discussion. Are you moving, is that what we should do? Someone makes a motion to add that to the agenda?
Which is, I believe, what we have, right?
Okay, all right.
We have a first and a second.
So first we should vote on that and then we can vote on whether or not to accept the current agenda or the bridge line.
Don't you have to approve the amendment agenda?
Yeah, I think it's.
So you have to include it and then vote.
Right.
Because we have not moved it yet.
So is there more discussion?
I'm all for doing that, it's just unfortunately we are limited in what we can say. Same discussion, so let's put it on the agenda to discuss. And then take it up, when would that be? At the end of the agenda, Mike, what do you think?
Wherever, wherever it's appropriate. I was just going to ask if I could make a statement.
Please do.
Related to this stuff. I think the portrayal that the district is fighting something is absolutely incorrect. As I mentioned in the statement that I released on Friday night, we want this done right. We want to comply correctly with any data request at any time, period. This one is incredibly complex and therefore we have worked with the city and attorneys and attorney representing the city and attorney representing the school district have communicated back and forth to try to provide clarity on which statutes apply to this. And there are conflicting statutes and conflicting opinions. And so we have jointly, along with the city, we are making a request to the Department of Administration to sort this out, tell us what the correct path forward is with every intent to comply with that. So like I said, the portrayal that we're fighting is incorrect. We're working with the city to get this done correctly because if you do a data request, an information request, and we inadvertently release private personnel data, we're liable for that. And that's not a position that I'm comfortable risking or having the school district in. And I believe the city probably feels the same way, so we have to get it right.
You're absolutely correct on that, Mike. Yeah, I want to have this discussion so that we know that we're protecting private data and, but we're also releasing all the public data.
Yep, and our intent, like I said, once the Department of Administration makes a decision, that's it. You know, then we'll know the answer to that question. What is public and what is private? And then it becomes pretty straightforward.
Okay.
That's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not.
No, I get it. I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm not bringing this up to step on toes or anything like that, but I just think that we need to put some sunlight on this.
Absolutely.
All right, I've had a motion and a second to add to the agenda, a discussion of New Vest. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we will add it. Where would you suggest we do that soon?
I guess my first reaction might be eight dot three within information. That's four. Two cents to put out there for the board to consider. I think that makes sense to me.
Okay, motion passes and we've added it, there's eight point three under information.
Thank you.
Let's take a look at the consent items. I need a motion.
We still need to.
We do.
Oh, we still approve the agenda even after we added that?
I thought we just voted on the amended agenda.
We just voted on the amended.
Oh, so we still should approve the agenda.
That approves the amended.
No, and how do we not accept?
Yes.
I think that motion just took care of the full agenda, including the addition.
Okay, all right.
Does that make sense?
It does, thank you. In that case, I do need a motion to approve the consent items listed.
Remove?
Second.
Discussion?
I got nothing.
Discussion?
I got nothing.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, acceptance of those all the way through consent. And we find ourselves now at number six, discussion. These are discussion items and we have several people who will be presenting these to us. The first, let's see, oh, this is for the policies. There was a meeting to take a look at some policies and I think we have a report on that. How did that come?
So we have several policies that we've been working on in the 600 series. You can, I'm sure that you've had a chance to take a look at the first reading of them, but basically a lot of what you are seeing on this list are policies that have been, haven't been revised for a while. I know that Mike and Sarah spent quite a bit of time reviewing them along with learning because a lot of these policies touch the teaching and the learning department and part of our district. So a lot of these changes are, just to bring them up to speed with the MSBA, what their recommendations are. A few of them had some red lines that were just more wordsmithing type of things versus anything of substantial significance that we need to be aware of. I'm just looking, I mean, there's a whole long list, I'm not going to go through all of them. I think there's another item on here under action and discussion, which is seven point one. We will talk about two of them that will be removed from this list. Are there any, and then obviously another one I had on my list that we reviewed, we will talk about again further in the agenda, which is seven thirteen, the student activity accounting. We also had that discussion in our last meeting as well. And that is basically driven by change in legislature laws that are effective July one. Are there any questions, comments? I mean, if you want me to go through all of them, I can, but there are, the changes are very minimal and it just brings our policies up to speed to meet what statutes are required from the state.
Statutes or MSBA?
Or MSBA, yes.
Everything.
Okay.
Okay, so the legislature ordered on these things and it was signed into law by the governor.
Just seven thirteen is the only policy that had any legislative effect, effective July one. And we will talk about that a little bit further down in the agenda.
Okay.
At this point, Kristi, do you think we want to take action on removing the two under seven point one? Are you ready to address?
I think we have to finish six, before we go out and take action on removal of the two.
Oh, okay, all right. But we don't need any action for six?
No, no.
Okay.
Nope, we will next time with the second meeting. So this is your opportunity to, between now and the next meeting, to review the policies. If you have any questions, let me know or Mike know. Between now and then, the next meeting we will take action to officially put them into our district, certain 600 plan policies.
Yeah, and I was asked about seven point one because it says a possible action. So I don't know if I should ask for a motion at this time or if we should first hear about it. I don't think it makes much difference.
I think what we need to do is just have the policies read at this time.
You need to review them in between, or is that what you're saying?
No, well, don't we read the policy aloud and get it on the record?
No.
No.
No, it's available.
Yep.
It's available to us, it's available to the public.
Okay.
Yep, and these are just the first readings. These are, this isn't necessarily, we're not taking action on them until we have the second reading.
Okay.
The first reading is basically making you aware, here are the changes, here's what we're proposing to implement with our policies.
All right.
And if there's discussion, we can have that between now and our second meeting or at the second meeting where we have our second reading of them, where we will actually take action to approve them as a policy for our district.
Okay.
Then under discussion for seven, seven point one, both of these have been recommended for removal and we could take possible action about that today. That's what we decide to do, is that what we want to do?
Correct. Mike, do you want to chime in with the elimination?
Yeah, and we're comfortable, you know, we can bring them back in July as well, but the seven point one policy, six nineteen and policy six twenty-three are both antiquated and no longer applicable. Six nineteen, there are other policies that take care of staff development. Staff development for standards was really specific language that has outlived its usefulness. So the concept of professional development, staff development, curriculum and standards are well-covered in other policies. And so there's actually potential for conflict between this antiquated one and the other policies. Six twenty-three is specifically for school districts that mandate summer school. We do not, so we have a general policy that just says, hey, there's summer school sometimes and it's really short, it's unnecessary, so.
So we're not eliminating, we're just.
We're not eliminating summer school, we are eliminating, we don't mandate summer school, so we don't need policy six twenty-three.
Okay. You've made a lot of kids who are kicking off summer school very sad.
No, 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 but yeah, so the, yeah, and the policy that's currently written really says nothing about mandating summer school. So it doesn't apply to us, is why we pulled those two out, just let's get rid of them.
So it seems like we're ready for a motion to remove six nineteen and six twenty-three.
Oh, second.
Okay, first and second, discussion. Okay, we're good?
Makes sense.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes to remove those two. Okay, seven point two.
Can I say one quick thing just to be sure? All of our school district policies are posted publicly on the school district website. So within our district is school board and within that tab at the very bottom is policy library. And they're organized in such a way that they're brought to you categorical and we've primarily been talking about 600 today. And so the current 600s that are listed within item six dot one, the current policy is listed there and you can reference what's currently in place. And then within six dot one, what's attached in board book are the recommendations for first reading, so if that makes sense. If those aren't new and the current version is available for public, for anyone.
Thank you, good point.
Very good, thank you. And we have several here that are going to be the Jeff's show. So starting with seven point two.
You get to listen to an accountant for too long.
You say that like it's a bad thing.
We're glad to have you here.
Oh, yeah, great, I'm glad to be here. Seven point two is the, I'm just asking you to approve a resolution for an underground electric easement agreement at our central family site. So as I've been working with it with Shakopee, SBU on this, I'm just concerned about access and any interruption of access to our building, nothing like that would occur. So it's an underground cable and I think the benefit for us is that it'll provide a redundant service. Right now I think there's one line that goes there, so chances of losing power could happen, so this would mitigate that, so.
So is this a cost to the district to do this?
No, there's no cost. There's no cost. So.
It's going to benefit us.
And I think, yeah, and so we're not, we're not asking for anything, it's a permanent easement, we're not asking for anything. I think we recognize our value as part of that, having that redundant service.
Especially if they're digging in that area, it's good to have redundant service.
Yes.
Can I make a motion that we approve this?
Can Mike have a point?
Yeah.
Well, I'll second that and has discussion.
I was gonna say, this would be an example of an item, you know, Jeff and I kind of talked about one back and forth and go, is it board worthy? But because of the public nature of it and you're potentially changing operations, we decide, as we typically will, we're going to err on the side of we'd rather bring too much than too little. And so, yeah, so it's nice when you go, hey, is there a cost? No. You know, but, but yeah, we think it's good to know, you know, involves another government agency and, and so.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to allow the public utilities underground easement agreement. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, passes.
Thank you, Jeff.
Moving right along.
Okay.
Long-term facilities, maintenance revenue with Southwest Metro District.
Okay, so this, we're asking you to approve a resolution actually for ISD 288's LTFM plan. So what they're required to do is have all of their member districts pass this resolution and then this dollar amount will flow through, but they don't have, they don't really have levy authority, so they have to do this through their, through their member district. So with our school board doing this gives them authority to access, I think our share for LTFM is seventy-seven thousand eight twenty-two sixty-nine. So that will show up on our levy. So again, it was there last year, I think this probably started in 2016 as far as the LTFM, where the legislature now allows the intermediates to access these funds, but they have to do that through their, through their member district. So their total, their total budget, they get a breakdown of their budget, but their total is the two hundred and seventy-five thousand and then you can see our share there. So again, when we bring our levy to this board in September preliminary and then final approval in December, this will be a line item as part of our, as part of our levy.
So is this, is this dollar amount, seventy-seven thousand, is that a consistent number that we've seen since 2016 or has that number changed?
You know what, no, it went up, it went up a little bit from, I think their number last year was maybe two twenty-five, so it's gone up a little bit. And I was talking to the superintendent, I think last, when we had our meeting last week, Thursday. So they're not, they're not capturing their, maybe you know, they're not capturing their total dollar amount under LTFM, but it's going to escalate, I think, over the next five, six years. So we may see that, that go up a little bit.
And because we are, it looked like on the list that Sarah had up, you run the primary you know, the percent there.
Yeah, and it's based on, and it's based on participation.
So what happens if one of these other districts vote this down and don't want to spend it? How does that affect our cost?
I think that's, I think that's going to happen with, I think it's, maybe, you know, they're gonna, they're actually going to pass it, but they're not going to, they're not going to levy. But, so 288 has, you may know more about this. So my understanding is one of the districts is, they're going to pass the resolution, but they're choosing to not have it flow through their levy. But if, if somebody.
So they're going to bill them, basically like tuition billing?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, you know, I probably haven't even mentioned, if we, if we didn't do this, if we didn't bring this through our levy, we would still have a bill with them of seventy-seven thousand dollars. It would just be, it would just come out of our general fund.
Dang it, regardless.
I mean, the impact is a line item that people will see, it's gotta be pretty small. Seventy-seven thousand dollars.
On a thirty-five million dollar levy, yeah, it's pretty small.
Why would a district choose to not do it?
I don't know.
I was just throwing that out. If they've got a large fund balance, they'd want to add another, increase their local tax.
I can think of one. If they have maxed out their lease levy for other uses within their district renting and leasing space.
But this is LTFM.
You're right, so wouldn't it affect?
Yeah, but you're right.
I got nothing now.
Or if they had a strong fund balance, wouldn't they prefer to pay it out of general instead of passing?
I don't know, maybe.
I've not seen that.
I would just say I would never, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I want general fund dollars for their classrooms, so. And it's not a significant tax. Is this money in the budget right now for this? Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just, well, you haven't, this is for, this is for 2021, okay? This is for the levy we're gonna, this board will pass in December. So it's for, it's December 20, you're gonna approve the paid 21 levy for 20, I think they've got it out there, for fiscal year 2020. And it's not a significant tax. Is this money in the budget right now for this? Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's just, well, you haven't, this is for, this is for 2021. Okay? This is for the levy we're gonna, this board will pass in December. So it's for, it's December twenty, you're gonna approve the paid twenty-one levy for twenty, I think they've got it out there, for fiscal year twenty twenty. But it is in the budget in this current year at last year's dollar. So we recognize all of the tax revenue from the current levy, that piece is in there, and then the expenses in there as well. And answer your question?
Is there something more? Don't work it. Thank you.
But, okay, so the safe schools and the LTFM. Has that been budgeted for? Is this something else we're gonna have to consider? No. It would be, it would be. But again, this is for, this is for the next, this is for twenty-one. Okay? Twenty twenty-one. Because, because the levy will be when, when we bring the levy to the board in September preliminary and December, the final, that's taxes payable in twenty for the 2021 school. But what's in the budget is the amount we did last year.
Okay. So this has been new spending and it's part of numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have some board members that haven't been through that levy cycle. Really what we're doing is approving, potentially most will approve this, so that District two eighty-eight will know what to put in to their levy plan in September to bring forward in December, and what they should bill the other districts, you know. For us, this is part of our levy plan.
Yeah, their board mayor too, who hasn't been through that levy cycle, so it can.
It always gets approved in December.
And I can tell you that the Southwest Metro Board approved this a hundred percent. That's why you're seeing it today.
So it's a little bit, you know, you're asking Jeff about the budget, and ultimately that comes down to approving the levy in December. You know, so it's, it's not that it's new spending, but it will differ a little bit sometimes from year to year. And it's part of the levy approval process, which happens in December, which will, Jeff will be walking you through, starting in September, we've gotta send stuff to the state. Typically, at that time, everybody just says, we're gonna levy to the max. Doesn't mean you're going to, but it gives you the best leeway then, because if you put a specific dollar amount in in September, you're bound to that, and they, and the projections in September typically aren't very good. So we're not even sure of the numbers until later. And then in December, Jeff goes through that truth in taxation and that whole levy thing and lays all of this out step by step, so.
But I would've done this last, I was probably sitting here last June, we did the same thing for this, for this issue. So that is in the levy.
Yeah. And if we didn't approve it as part of the levy, then we would have to come up with seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars out of the general fund, so then it would impact negatively the typical budget. And Jeff has not built that in next year, because he nor I know of any district that hasn't approved this or even what the reason would be. It's pretty typically approved through the levy.
Okay, so then we don't set a hard number in September. At what point do we do that?
Truth in taxation in December.
So Jeff, you said this number is a little bigger than, than this current year?
Yeah.
Why is that?
Because there, because there, that's a conversation I had with the superintendent last week, because, because I was asking, how do you, as an intermediate district, how do you get to that LTFM amount? Because, because we get three hundred and eighty-six dollars per student, okay, for a regular K-12 district. So for an intermediate, they take their numbers, so they arrive at that total in a different way, and I'm not exactly sure how. But, but what, what he did say was, they're not, they could get more than that, but they're not levying the max. It would be like us with our three hundred and eighty-six dollars per student and our two-point-three million saying, we only want two. And so we're stepping back from that three eighty-six.
So it has nothing to do with number of students that we send through that program?
Well, our, our share does. The twenty-eight point.
Percent does.
Our share certainly does. Yeah. 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 But, but after my conversation last week, I'm assuming that two seventy-five is gonna be something greater the next year. Okay, so what if our participation goes up or down? Does that number change or are we locked in? We're locked, we're locked in here, but then it would probably change for the next, the next year.
Has our usage been around twenty-eight percent the last few years?
Yeah, I don't think we've had any major fluctuation.
Because the last time we had one was when we opened Takata, pulled some of the students back into our department.
Definitely forced some kids out.
But otherwise, I think it's been in and around. You're the expert.
Yeah, and we typically were the largest that needs her cover, so.
All right. If I could have a motion to approve the resolution of Southwest Metro District two eighty-eight's long-term facilities.
I'll be there.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I think we can bring to a motion on seven point four? We kind of discussed about that one.
Oh, yeah, we did. Okay, I see that.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Discussion then on the seven point four, since we kind of bundled them. We're good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I feel like we're injecting a lot. One of the things that always troubles me, you know, we talk about South, well, Southwest Metro is kind of an us and a them. We are Southwest Metro. We make up twenty-eight point three percent of that, and they provide services. So, you know, even though they have a district, different number, we are Southwest Metro, you know, part of us. And so we belong to them, fully participate. They do an incredible job of programming for SHACAPU students. You know, not all of our students, but they serve a large number of, so, sorry, I just felt I'd be remiss. It's been one of my mantras for the last six weeks.
Well, then this is a place to do that, for sure. Okay, we move on to eight, which is informational, eight point one, our monthly update.
Okay. Yeah. So I think I've done eleven of these.
Has a change.
And I'll, this will be the last one, because, because what I'll do after this is, can switch to a preliminary audit. Okay, here's what preliminary audit numbers look like. So we'll start that probably, I think we'll be safe to do that at the end of July, so. But anyway, as I've been saying, I think all along here, we're tracking, actuals are tracking where they should be, and some of the bigger numbers, salaries and wages, we're tracking favorite, really favorably in that area. And so the one thing that happens this week, towards the end of this week, so, you know, we've got different employees that are paid at different times, some are paid twenty-one times. So a big part of that salaries and wages is our certified instructional staff. They're paid twenty-six times. And they'll be paid a check cash in July and August for audit purposes. We recognize that in June. So I'm always anxious to, I've been asked payroll today, when are you gonna have those payoff checks, huh? Because once we do that, I, well, we just pinpointed that, that number. But looking at that seventy-eight point nine six percent, I know we're in pretty good shape on that. And benefits will follow as well. So, so we're projecting that six hundred to a little bit of a surplus, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, I think we're going to do a little better, and we're building back some fund balances, as we've been talking about throughout the year. So the other kind of good thing, I think I put in the cover memo, was the local fees, interest, et cetera. That's, you know, it's, it's not a big number there, but when you look at, when you look at the seventy-eight million dollars for state, that's, it's kind of a lot of calculations there. And if, if our enrollment is correct, that's easy to pinpoint. But the one that's maybe not so much is the local fees, how many donations, interest revenue. So there's just, you know, you look at historical numbers and say, okay, we're gonna throw one point, it's a little more calculated than that, but we're gonna put one point nine million there. So that's one that can vary. And so through the end of May, we're at one million nine forty-six. So I can, I'll sit here and tell you, we're gonna go over on that one, so. That's just good. That's one indication of a positive variance that rarely notice there, so.
So is that where all of our, I know I've asked this question before, but is that where all of our revenue that we get in for different people renting our facilities, whether it's the...
Yeah, we get some of that there, but you're, you're looking at...
Where does that apply?
That would be a line item like that. Right now, that, we're just looking at the general fund. So right now, we have a lot of that going into Fund Four, community education. We'll look at your end and see, okay, if we've covered all the costs for generating that revenue within Fund Four, then some of that money will move back to Fund One. So I don't know if I'm really serious, like, what's he saying? He knows, sorry.
He's nodding his head.
Sure.
That sounds like positive on top of positive.
Anyway, I think, I think we're in good shape. Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Is that it, or what?
Updates. Well, actually, I think we call you back up later on.
Yeah, but I get a little break.
Yeah, you get a little rest. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, we move on to eight point two, Raptor Visitor Management System. And our presenters tonight, if you step forward, Ed and I, I'm never sure if it's Z-Man, Z-Man? Or Simon?
Simon.
I had a fifty-fifty chance of it through it. Okay. And Jimmy Eames and Brian Thorpe. Rose. Okay. And they're gonna present some information to us about this system.
So we didn't do a whole slideshow or anything. I'm just gonna tee it up for these two and let them talk. But the reason we're bringing this here tonight is, we're gonna talk about visitor and volunteer management systems. And currently in the district, we have a couple of systems. And it's a highly visible thing, because whenever you walk into a building, you see that Lobby Guard kiosk, and people gotta walk up to it, scan under driver's license, hope it works, put their information in, get a sticker to slap on, all that stuff. That's just part of this whole thing. But it's, it's because of the high visibility of the system that they want to stop in tonight and chat about it. So we'll let these two take it away, because they did all the dirty work on this.
All right. Well, so for the past year, I've been kind of looking at what we had from a volunteer management standpoint. We also got involved in the visitor management because of the champions customizing the menu so we could track log hours on that. And the bottom line is, both systems do not talk to each other in any way whatsoever, and it's not an option. So we started researching what options there would be, and a few things that we felt were must have. One, I mentioned, they must talk to each other. Secondly, we wanted to have a point, a single point of entry. In other words, from a volunteer management, if I want to volunteer as a parent and I have a kid in two schools, our current system requires me to apply at each school, and it's the same form, and it's separate approval processes, and it doesn't make any sense. And it, as a parent, I don't feel it's very customer service friendly. So Raptor, which we ultimately are hoping to go with, has a cloud-based system where you can apply, I can customize that volunteer menu, I can customize it by the school, but it still is one record that would tie to every school. And I can limit the administrative rights to my site coordinators to see just those records that pertain to their school and the activities that they want to have people apply for. We also wanted to integrate the background check for our volunteers. We have a sex offender database, the National Sex Offender Database. Anybody who comes to our buildings right now with Lobby Guard gets that run, that will continue. So visitors and contractors and anyone else that sets foot in our building will still have that, but we're, but the integration of having a volunteer and having that background check be part of the system did not exist before. It was a separate process that we had to pull them out and run it separately. And this will mean that a person who volunteers must register as a volunteer ahead of time in order to, in other words, you can't walk in our building and say, I wanna volunteer. You're gonna need to fill out the application, and there's gonna be a waiting time period before you're approved. We just, because we have to run it, and we have to establish how, how much time that is yet. It will be a couple of days in the very least. One thing that we had a big limitation on with Lobby Guard and with how Connor was the ability to pull data and, and get data at all different levels that we wanted. And one of the things we found with Raptor is it has a very robust reporting system. I was amazed by the data I could pull from a visitor standpoint, from a volunteer standpoint. We can have reports queued up to automatically generate to buildings every Friday to certain people. You can have them attached, you know, if, if there's a need in a building to have a visitor list or a volunteer list generated, it can automatically be set up. It's, it's a pretty, a pretty nice system. The other, another plus that I have run into is I had one of our Hispanic liaisons ask what we were gonna do in regards to translating information in Spanish. And Raptor allows us to, it automatically will allow the application, it translates it to Spanish. Doesn't do any other languages, but that's built in. And I think that's a big plus. And I've talked with the liaison about that, and he's quite excited, so. Yeah, okay. And then the other issue that Ed and I both have run into, and this is more Lobby Guard related, is we just, the customer service was not hitting our needs very well. We had a lot of equipment, times where it were down, and you couldn't reach a live person. You had to actually submit it online and wait. And it, and what we found with Raptor is they're in twenty-six thousand schools, and they have a live, big customer service staff. Plus, we have a local person who has already given me a cell number and has told me, call anytime you, you know, if you have an issue. There are some more things that probably pertain to the visitor.
Yeah. The, for the Raptor, there's also the capability of putting six emergency buttons on the screen of whoever's using the system, which in our case would most likely be the main secretary. You can customize those panic buttons to be fire, fire, active shooter, tornadoes, bad weather. And what happens when they click on that, we customize a list of who gets texts or emails, and that can include local authorities. So instead of having to make a phone call in an emergency situation, the click of that button automatically sends us out, and we customize the list of who gets the emails. I think it was a voice recording we can also send out for calls or texts. So that was another big plus to them. As she said, Lobby Guard is own, oh, Raptor's in about twenty-six thousand schools nationwide. Lobby Guard is currently only in about two thousand schools nationwide. So Raptor is more specialized to schools. And just recently, Raptor actually bought out Lobby Guard. So.
Well, that makes it a simple decision.
Yeah.
We're looking at upgrading with the same company.
Basically, yes. And from what we're, our customer service guy we're using at, Raptor said that they're, they bought Lobby Guard because they want Lobby Guard to be more industrial for industries and stuff like that, and Raptor's gonna continue to be the more school-based one. So that's why they bought it, is try and expand more into the industrial side of it. Next year's cost with the help desk, which is currently what she uses for volunteer system...
Help counter instead of...
Yeah, help counter, yeah. The cost for the next twelve months with Lobby Guard would be twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents.
If we stuck with our current system.
If we could stuck with the current system. I will note that four thousand one hundred and forty dollars of that is part of a warranty. We're in a two, a three-year warranty period, and this would be year three. But they said they would waive that fee for us if we go with Raptor. So I just want you to know that when I come down to the savings part. So Raptor would be, for our first year, would be fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty if we have one system in each school. If we want two systems in each school, our, would be an additional three thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. And then after that, we're gonna see, after the following years, we're gonna be seeing a savings of approximately thirty-one hundred dollars. The reason we may want two systems in the schools is the first time somebody comes into the building, you want the secretary or a staff member to check them in, because that's when they do the main check of the sexual offender. And sometimes somebody might have the same name, so they'll pop up and be, does this person look like this person? And they give the information of, he lives in Minnesota, this is his age, this is, and they'll have a picture if it's there. So just because your name matches somebody on the database doesn't mean that you are that person. So the first time you check in, you want a staff member to do that, so you can look and be like, no, that's not him, no, that's not him. Then after that, they can check themselves in. So then you would have a second station, so after they've been checked into the system, they can check themselves in. It still does the sexual offender check, but what will happen, it will, will not print a badge for them if it pops up. It still does the sexual offender check, but what will happen, it will, will not print the badge for them if it pops up again. So, if a new person is added, or that person themselves is added to the sexual predator database, it won't print the badge out, so they're gonna come to the desk going, "It won't print me a badge." So, then the secretary would take over and find out why. So, overall, I think it's gonna be a lot better system to be able to have these two systems that communicate.
And, and I think the other thing I wanna mention is, we're in a pretty aggressive timeframe to get, to implement this in place. They've told us they need two weeks. The big thing we have to do is we have to get processes and communication in place and make sure that all the training is done and that there are no, nobody, especially, I do not want to stress out our front desk people at the schools. They got a lot on their plates in August, so we need to get everything in order, because they're gonna be a part of needing to understand how this works, especially with visitors. Anybody entering the building, the first time they ever come in any of our buildings, they will have to hand over their ID to the front desk person. And once that record is in there, it's in any building. So, if I, if I hand it over at Eagle Creek, I won't have to hand it over if I go to Red Oak. But that first initial time requires a physical touch of it. So, we need to figure out on maybe connect days, we're gonna have my site coordinators there, and try to get as many people filtered through and get in the system, get them to apply to volunteer, get them to come through as a volunteer or a visitor. And, and visitor and volunteer, by the way, the records talk to each other. So, if I, my record is on file with my picture because I've been in as a visitor. When I apply for a volunteer, if I get approved, I don't need to hand over my license, I'm already in the system. So, it just seems like it's going to be, once we work out the process internally, it's gonna be a much more user-friendly system that gives us some of the things that we were lacking before.
And again, this is an example of an information item. You know, the dollar amounts typically, if it were, if we were buying widgets or something, we'd just sign the contract and be done. But because of the public nature of it, and we're replacing a system at the front desk, I thought it was really important to have this group come in and share with you, give you the opportunity to ask questions, raise any concerns. But it, but it's not technically an action item on our agenda, so.
But I appreciate you bringing it forward, just because we, and this was part of our tech referendum, and our tech levy and the bond referendum with school security. And we can never be too secure, and this seems to be a great step forward, so I applaud the efforts.
Does this also help not having to do a background check every year? Or do we continue to have to do that?
So, that's a great question. I've asked what other districts do, because right now, this zeros out every year. And we can set that, but it's not, it seems to be most districts do it as a one-year. But it's something that we need to decide as a district and then work with them. They're willing to work with us on, if we say every two years or three years.
I, I would think that it would probably be wise to do it at least once a year.
Address changes and everything.
Address changes, you know, if somebody does do something, that would get them...
I'm just talking about the volunteer part of it, because, you know, you have a kid in a, in a school from kindergarten to fifth grade, filling that form out every single year is some of the most fun things to do. And typically, it happens right before a field trip, so you only have so much time to do it.
And our goal is that that is not what triggers it, that it happens at the connect days.
Right.
That's what we're really hoping is to, because those field trips are what kill everyone, because it's, you know, you're not approved, and all of a sudden, you're, you show up.
Right.
So, I don't see that we would actually carry the volunteer app through every year, because then we have to figure out who's not there anymore and who's there, and whom it switches schools. But there, it's tied together with the background check. So, it's certainly something we can discuss.
So, I have a question in regards to, you've mentioned all of our buildings, does that include Pearson this fall?
This estimate, it's not.
But it does include something.
Yes.
I'm just thinking forward to our Citizens Facilities Advisory Committee and what they will be looking at this fall and recommendations that, if they would bring forward, that we're gonna put Pearson back into the mix. How easy or how hard would it be to get that school incorporated right away?
Very easy.
Get it set up, and maybe we're not using it for another year, if that would be the case, where we would wanna use that facility again. Now, would probably be the time to make sure that, while we're doing this, let's make sure that we're doing it at the right places.
Yeah, and my understanding, and if I'm wrong, is that it's not gonna be difficult at all to set up another site. We would probably just wait on buying the equipment till we knew we needed it.
Would that increase our cost, what you showed us?
It, it would somewhat, because we're charged on a per-site, I really, what is it, like...
Five forty percent?
Yeah, five forty per school.
I just wanted to put that out there.
Per year, yeah.
Because that is something that could potentially change this.
One of the nice things with the system, that'll make it easier for us to support, Lobby Guard is very much a proprietary system in terms of the hardware that you use. This, I can pull a PC off the shelf that we're not using, slap a label maker on there. It's, we're gonna be ready to go at that point, so.
And what if we pulled one building out and put in another one? So, is, would there be any cost then for...
It's like a setup fee, and it was not significant. It was like two hundred and forty dollars a bill, it was, it, it's not significant.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that we're not locked into something that could be just a temporary thing.
No.
We will be able to add, and we can remove if we need to.
And have we resolved the communication issues in Central? As in, principal trying to call...
They have trouble calling the police, the 911.
I know they worked on that, and I believe, yeah, and I know Dave worked directly on that. My understanding is they came up with, with a workaround for this year. I don't think it's ideal yet, but they, they came up with something that was better than that original.
And then, just really curious why they weren't equipped with the two-way radios like all the other buildings. Wasn't demanding an answer.
I appreciate that. But I, but I know it's on Dave's radar, so, yeah.
So, because of the tight timeline, like Jenny mentioned, we just wanna get this out in front of you. If there's any other questions, feel free to drop us a line or whatever, but not hearing any strong objections or concerns, so.
It sounds like some excellent items that you're looking at, and really good improvements for our schools. Appreciate your research on this, as finding something that's going to give us even more opportunities.
I would be in favor, even if it made things more inconvenient, if it kept the kids safer, you know. Adults have to learn how to deal with inconvenience, you know.
And I do, I do wanna just throw out there too, we did work with a, kind of a broker guy that works with multiple visitor management system. Raptor's not the only one we looked at. The broker guy that we worked with recommended Passage Point, which is another system. He thought that would best fit our needs, and we looked and compared that to Raptor, and it just... It's not as robust, and it's just, it kinda falls back into the Lobby Guard of lack of communication between the two and the lack of reporting. So, I just wanted to let you know, we did look at other options too.
Now, Jenny, when you mentioned that you can pull more data from this new system, is that gonna be data that you can use to say, for example, this year, Red Oak had these many kinds of volunteers, is this stuff we're gonna be able to share with people to understand what a wonderful way people come into our schools?
It, it sounds like any field that we have on our volunteer application or any information we're tracking when we're signing visitors in, is we can actually have like company name. We can have ads and fields. We can pull data from any of those, from any of the schools. And I, as the administrator of all of it, or any of us, would be able to pull it district-wide, or my site coordinators, or somebody with the rights at the school could pull it that way. I haven't played around with it a ton, but I was really excited when he was showing it to me. So, I, yes, I'd love to be able to use it to really pull data that could show how great our community is.
And I think it's also interesting to share data about how many people tour the high school. Because I've been in a couple of groups, and this is someone from the Department of Education. Thanks for coming out, you know, so I think that's kind of good information too.
It would be neat to see how it works, once we have it set up and running, and maybe that's another learning session topic at a future meeting in the fall or something, just to kinda give us an overview of here's how it's working and how the implementation went.
Yeah, you'll have to go through it to get here.
So, thank you so much. For information today and ideas as well. And that brings us to eight point three, information on New Best. All right, are you gonna do eight point three first?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm not sure how we move forward with this discussion. As I said earlier, I, I personally don't know enough about it to get discussing.
Well, I'm really thrilled that Mike gave us an update with what's going on, and... Saying that it's basically right now in the lawyer's hands, and by us even trying to say anything at this meeting might be too soon. But just to get it out there that we have a public comment, and we've had comments, but just so that if anybody's watching, hopefully people are watching, that they, that they...
Thousands.
Thousands, the entire district, forty-seven thousand is what I thought I read. That, that they know that this is not being pushed under the rug by us, that we are looking into it, we are responding, and we want everything to get out that needs to get out so that we can deal with it and move on. Because you can't move on until you have taken care of past problems. However much we want to, until it's all out there, it's really tough to do.
I, well, I agree philosophically, and it is counterintuitive. But the Data Practices Act is a very conundrum and complex thing, and, well, I'm, I'm a huge fan of sunshine, right? Sunshine is the best disinfectant. I, you know, would love to, but that would incur some pretty significant financial risk, at least as our lawyers have advised us.
And we don't want that.
Especially to some of the parties who...
Might benefit.
Might benefit. That, and, and that is again, counterintuitive. So, I, I appreciate it. I, I think it's great to always discuss to the best of our ability, but unfortunately, you know, Angela and I are probably recalling the length at which our attorneys went to discuss the penalties for us discussing anything that was in that, including criminal prosecution suits against this district and any board members individually. It was pretty clear. So, sorry if I'm not sharing more, I just, that's, it was made very clear that it's not an option. So, hopefully, Department of Administration frees us of that burden, we can certainly have a more robust conversation.
My, one of my big questions is, do we have an unredacted copy of that report in this bill?
Under lock and key, yes.
Okay, and is that available to the board members?
I'm looking into that. My understanding is that board members previously saw redacted copies of that, but I'm not sure if that's correct.
Okay. Like, like I said, in order to provide proper oversight, we need to have access to the unredacted copy so that we can make actual fact-based decisions.
I would say that when I joined the board, this was right after the high school principal was dismissed for oversight of ironically, the student activity accounts. So, this was seven, eight years ago. And when I joined the board, we were told that we would not have access to any of that information that we could give to our board service. That's a different scenario, but that's the only comparable that I can reference in my time on the board. Again, it sounds like Mike's looking at that with our attorneys and...
The question was asked earlier today. And so, I'll, I'll look into that. And I've learned a lot in this process. And it, and again, I'm not, I'm not embellishing or exaggerating. When I say that data privacy laws are complex, they're incredibly complex. And I appreciate what Matt said, that violation of them is a very serious matter. And so, this, there are some things, you know, that I deal with routinely, that you go, "Yep, I, I've got a pretty good feel for what the law is on that." This is really, really challenging, and so, we, we do reach out to an attorney to get expert advice.
And when attorneys who are experts in this field have differing opinions, it's...
And we've been told at work, we can't, and somebody calls up for a reference, we can give them the start date, the end date, and pretty much job title, and that's it, because we don't want, you know, we don't want somebody to find out that we didn't, they didn't get a job because of what we said, because lawyers, lawyers, lawyers. And we don't wanna be overly liable for anything.
You know, and I guess from my perspective, being a new board member, being a community member for a long time, it's frustrating to not have information for what people ask in questions. I totally understand. I mean, it, it's hard for four new board members, a majority of the board, not knowing anything about what's happened. And the discussion in the community about, we've all read it, we all know what, how the community feels for the most part about this, but it's very hard to say, "I don't know anything" because of the data privacy laws. But that's the truth. I mean, as a new board member, I don't know anything more than what they do. I've seen the, you know, the blacked-out version of the, of the report, like everyone else. And I, I would ask the community members to be patient with us and to respect that the data privacy laws and the importance of the data privacy laws and why there are data privacy laws, it's extremely important. But I will say that one of the things that frustrates me is, that frustrated me with this when it came out, two things. One, as a board member, I would've liked to have known about it before Friday, that this was a potential concern. Because I know that this was something that was ongoing for maybe five, six weeks in the district. So, I just would've liked to have known before Friday that there was a possibility of something. And second of all, it frustrates me that, as Mike alluded to before, somebody that has, has a journalism degree and has gone through ethics courses in regards to that, that our local newspaper did not allow the district to respond and provide comments on our side of what happened, or why we're doing what we're doing.
To include it in the article, to include that in the article.
Exactly, that we were absolutely blindsided by this. It was not right, ethically, it was not right. And that frustrates me as...
It was a total ambush.
As, as a journalism major in college and taught the rights and wrongs, that was extremely frustrating to me. And I, I one hundred percent believe that the newspaper owes the school district an apology for what was done, because it was not right. Those are the two big things that frustrate me with this whole, it's not what's in it, but it's how this is somewhat being pulled out of proportion inappropriately.
I agree with Christie on both parts completely.
Yeah, right, I would echo that. But what, getting back to access of the unredacted version, I know you're, you're taking the steps you have to to make sure that everything's in order, but I, I just, it astonishes me that duly-elected members of the school board that are charged with oversight can't have access to the full information.
And I don't know the answer to that question yet, so.
Yeah.
But even if we did, Paul, there, we wouldn't be able to talk about it.
Oh, absolutely not. Absolutely not.
So, it doesn't necessarily do us any good today, whether we have the information or not, because we can't, somebody would call you or email you, you can't say...
Oh, yeah.
You can't provide the information that's...
Yeah, I don't have that much money to pay people, but, you know, if I violate their rights to privacy, so. I'm, I'm not talking about doing that so much, but for our own knowledge. You know, that way, you know, if you compare the redacted, unredacted, and you have questions, then it would be something we could bring to you, Mike, you know, and you could go, go to the state.
And again, like the new board members, I wasn't here when that determination was made, so I will explore it on your behalf, I'm happy to do so.
Yeah.
I will just say that I don't know. It sucks to say, I don't know. It's less positive to say, I can't say. Because that feels like I'm holding my seat, right? And I'm sorry, I'm trying to comply with the law. And so.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't even be talking about this particular issue. That's the worst part of my job in general is when you're bound by data privacy and you, people ask and you want to share information and you can't, you know, and that's, yeah, that always feels lousy. I don't think I'll ever get, get used to that or get over that. But it's also a responsibility that you have that outweighs that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, you know, saying give us access so we can share it, but we need to know.
And I'll, like I said, I'll explore that. I don't, I wasn't here. I'm certainly planning to do so. Yep.
It all takes time. I understand that.
All right. Do we have any sort of a timeline? Two months, six months?
For that? I'll explore.
For that decision? No, the decision at the, at the department, yes.
As I wrote in the weekly rap, the best estimate of the attorneys was approximately two months, but they, no way of telling if it gets moved up or moved back. It's certainly beneficial to have a joint application. I think that adds some credence and it's, hey, we've got government entities that are coming together. Yeah, please give us a determination. We want a determination. We'd like it done as expediently as possible. But yeah, and I did, you know, I spent some time last week. I told you I've learned a lot. I was Googling the Department of Administration. I now have some idea of, they, they have authority over a lot of things in the state of Minnesota, so.
Very quiet.
And we miss that in a lot of our government courses, I believe. You know, nobody talks about the Department of Administration, so. Yeah, as, as we hear, we'll definitely let you know, but that was the best estimate.
Maybe we should go back to the civics.
I don't think this would be covered in the
I think that would be covered in civics.
No.
I had civics, this was not covered.
Yeah.
I actually thought data privacy was a federal law, but it's not, huh?
I believe there, I believe there are federal statutes and state statutes as well. And that's, that's those challenges, which statutes apply in which situation and, you know, and then what precedent, what opinion, what, you know, so there. Like I said, I've learned a lot. It's been, it's been fascinating.
You know, the federal government, they can set theirs, but if the state of Minnesota wants to make one that's more restrictive, they can do that. They can, they can enact a law that says that blow up the federal, but they can make it more restrictive.
Wish we had a clean answer or something.
I just like the fact that we got everything out there public and saying why we can't, and hopefully Mike's looking into things and just getting that out there, I think is a very positive thing.
When you're asking that question about board members being able to view the entire document, is there, can you find out if there's like a window of time of when board members stop seeing this information? Like, can every single new board member that ever gets elected gets to see this?
I will, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask a very open-ended question.
Statute limitations.
What laws pertain to this? How is it typically done? Why would it be done that way? What is, you know, what do we have choice in? What don't we have choice in? What is, you know, because that's, that's the other thing.
Well, it's clearly an issue we're being asked to address.
Right.
Still, I mean, yes.
Yes. You know, it's different than your example of someone who's dismissed. That's in the past and, you know, there's nothing we need to know about that.
This is kind of a little bit of a side topic. Do we want to respond to the news article by just saying, you know, with an op-ed or something that?
Interesting. I thought Dr. Ed's statement covered it fairly directly and had on, but I didn't, we certainly, we wanted to certainly cover it. And we've talked to our communications committee.
You know, let, let, let the community know that in no uncertain terms, we are investigating to make sure that A, all data privacy laws are followed, and B, to give the public as much information as possible.
I think that asking newspapers to print the statement that the district made on Friday would be very, very applicable. And versus
They did have that.
They did.
All right, then. We're gonna move on to action items, starting with nine point one. Joe just got done saying he's reported to us 11 times about the old budget. Now we're gonna take a look at the new one.
Now it's another. Her page. Sarah, you can bring that up?
So we talked about presenting the final budget, and the final is pretty much is what you saw at the work session and I think maybe a meeting or, or two before that. So we're asking you to approve the budget. It's gotta be done by prior to July 1, and again, it's a lot, let's keep it here, but
Okay.
I did meet with, Joe and I, with the CFAC group June 12. Kind of reviewed the same, got the same presentation you had on the, on the 10th, and they are, their comments would be favorable. It's in balance. So I do just want to talk about, usually I'm here, it's, it's the big, it's the general fund that I like to talk about, but doing a lot of work this summer with that food service fund. We just had some things happen this year. Big decrease in the number of meals, and we need to know, we need to know what's going on there, so. So, you know, we, we talk about bringing a, this is preliminary budget. We talk about bringing back or revise. And typically that revise is because, well, I think I mentioned that the last meeting, we'll have a number of staff leave over the summer. We've slotted in their dollar amounts where they are in the salary schedule for this budget, and then we update that with all the new staff. So that's typically the reason for a revised budget, but this one will also have some answers to food service. So, so when I come back in probably October, kind of timeframe, I must say that we'll see that in balance. You know, there is a good fund balance there. If your food service fund is in deficit, you end up taking that out of the general fund. We don't want that to happen, so. So that's, I guess, the comment there on the, on the governmental funds. Again, with the general fund, we are adding, building back some reserve. A lot of that for this year is in restricted coming from a, a land sale, and the unrestricted surplus is about 70,000, so pretty tight, but.
Is the land sale still on for December?
As far as, as far as I know.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think, Sarah, if you wanna, so I, I didn't kinda wanna repeat the same presentation I did on the job, but, but kept a few slides in there. So, big deal here is, is that basic general education aid increase, 2%. That's what we had built in the budget. Wish it would have been three, but that is what our assumption was, so. I think we're gonna talk about the required board control along.
School safety aid, the state tax revenues appear to be running well ahead of the targets they set, and so it appears that we're likely to get the full 30.
So we might see that full month. Super.
So does that mean that we can then take some of that money and apply it to Raptor, for example?
Maybe. You know, I mean, we'll, we'll want to do what we need to do here if we can.
We will get 30 million or the
No, 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 no.
I was gonna say.
I didn't say that.
I didn't think so.
We'll get about 75,000.
Sounds like they wouldn't get 30 million.
No, I don't think, I didn't mean that. We'll get a, we'll get a piece of that. And then, you know, we'll have to see. There, it'll come with some strengths. Here's the things you can do.
So, so basically, as we said earlier, if there's a million students in the, in the state, it'd be 30 bucks a student, which would be 240, 250,000 dollars.
Yeah.
One time.
One time. One time.
But it's better than no time.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. So this is just a breakdown of on the sign fund balance, so you can see our, our total fund balance. So on the sign, FY17, that's 691, so we've been building back slowly some fund balance. And then I think the next slide, probably let's say, breakdown of how it looks for June 30 next year. Beyond reserve going to 2.7, restricted 1.5, and it gives that 1,125 added to the current year, so. I think, I could have taken off the next steps, but again, just asking you to approve the budget. It was reviewed by CFAC, favorable comments, I think, Joe, on the 12th. Next steps, we'll be updating all the staffing information, see if there's big slings. It shouldn't be huge, but there will be some. Questions?
I have a question in that, I, I guess I still don't understand. I know that there was a new category to, for special education to reduce the cross-subcity issue. But then I keep hearing this 2%. So is it 2% and?
That's a, that is, that's a good question. That's a separate categorical funding string. So 2% is, I don't have that on here, but 2% is our, our general education revenue. And then there's a categorical, in that budget book, I think in the front, when you go through assumptions, it'll break it down. It'll show, I have one section just on the basic, and then I've got property tax revenue, and then I've got the different categorical pieces. So that's a separate, separate component. So that is additional revenue.
All right. In that case, let's see, I will ask for a motion to approve the 2019-20 school district preliminary budget as presented. We have a motion and a second.
I'm trying to make the motion.
I'd just like to point out to Jeff, you did a great job on the budget. I, I've looked through it. You, you've answered the questions that I've had, and, and I'm pretty sure I had some odd questions that you
Oh, well.
They fell. I was like, I'm not sure if this is, but I, you, you did a great job. I, I, it's easy to follow and everything, so I appreciate it.
I do too. I feel like I truly am understanding things more and more. Every time you come, I learn something new.
Great.
I still have a lot more to learn, but appreciate it very much.
That means more presentations.
All right. Love doing.
So you're the accountant who likes to do presentations, okay.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Actually, try having Jeff do it.
So I, can I just make one comment? As we move to for next year, which would be the next school year, 2021, right? The next budget year?
Yeah.
We would be approving and building. If there, I would like to have a better understanding of how that budget goes together. And I maybe I missed part of it because I didn't start a board until January. I don't know. I don't know what I don't know. So, but I would like to have a better understanding as to how some of the numbers come together. And I think that's probably why I have a lot of questions.
Yeah, and that's, no, that's fine. I appreciate the question.
So whether it's during a learning session or something.
You know, sometimes I, as I'm doing it and, you know, putting the, we're putting the nuts and bolts together, but then you think, okay, now I'm bringing this to a public meeting, and, I mean, I could put a presentation together that could run two hours and
Sure.
go through. So I mean, so you're trying to, so I hear you, and okay, I'll see what we can do then. So I'm not here an hour and a half going through these one item, but answer your questions.
I would just like to have a better understanding.
Sure.
You don't wanna go like
I would. I can.
You say that like it's not a fun thing to do.
You know, I would say it's, it's pretty much, you know, as I talk about, I think all the time with that monthly report, it's, I mean, there, if you have the revenue component, that's pretty much tied to students, and then it's, and then it's staff. And then obviously there, the questions you add, some of the other, they're, they're there too, but but it's, once you set that staffing ratio, several contracts, you have a lot of your budget done, but there are other pieces to it.
Okay. We're gonna move on to nine point two. In the past, the school district had a couple of different ways. I understand that they could handle extracurricular activities accounts. And now state legislature has narrowed it down to one, and so.
Yeah, so It's still our option. We can only pick that one.
Yeah, so you've got to pass a resolution to pick them on that. Yeah, so in the past, we've had, this district, and I don't even know in the state how, but we'll break them. Some districts have had them under board control, others have done it the way, the way we have. I think any district I've been in, it's been separate, but we don't have that option anymore. So what we had here was what we called our Fund 50, our accounts with, basically at the high school level, so the student government, student council, different, various clubs. They work out here and they have, when they're in, we were still accounting for it. It was subject to an audit, but it was kind of a separate entity within the district. So what will happen now is they all, they all come into the general fund. So when I talk about a budget, and we didn't do that for this budget, but when I do the budget revision in October, we will say, by the way, we're adding 250,000 student activity fund revenues, 200, it's not gonna have an impact on the fund balance, but it needs to be recognized within the general fund. So we're, I think, I think in the policy, Mike mentions, we've been, we knew this was coming from our auditors probably since March, April, there was talk that this is going to happen, so, so we've been gearing up for it. Our big thing will be talking to the club advisors to make sure that they're following. Rules won't change that much, but they'll change a little bit, and the accounting will, will change, so that's kind of in that.
One of the questions I have is, and maybe this doesn't impact this particular account, but how the volunteer, or not volunteer, but the kids that fundraise for trips, is that impacted by this? Or is that still a separate thing?
That would be, that would be, if, if it's at the high school and we have this European account, that is part of this. But if you're down here in the elementary and you're fundraising, that's always been.
So like baseball or band or softball, whoever, they're fundraising to go on a trip during spring break. Would that be impacted by this?
But if, if it's already a club, okay, the only impact is
So let's just use band, for example, because if next year they're
Band is, there's a student activity fund for band. So yes, that will be, that will be part of this. But I, but I think when you say impacted, there, this is kind of more a, a county kind of
Right, but how, how those things, how the fundraising dollars or how each student, because each student has to raise so much money, whether it's, you know, volunteering at the concession stand or I know that there's a different way that they track that stuff.
That probably won't change. So I don't think, I don't think the operation of these clubs will change. They'll just have a guy like me doing a little more auditing, so.
So you mentioned auditing. You know, we traditionally got our four books.
Yeah.
And our audit.
Yeah.
Will this not be folded into the
So, so now this will be, yep, within the, within the CAFRA.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Not for this year.
Correct.
You'll still get them this fall, but the next year, because we're, we'll start this July 1. So pretty much, if we don't comply, there's gonna be some consequences, I would imagine. Yeah, I don't think there's an
It's a state law.
I think that's a founding rule, so.
I would suggest we
That we approve this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then something that comes from that is the school district policy 713 needs to be updated to agree with this new way of accounting for it. And I understand there's been, teaching and learning has had their input, admins had their input, and we're looking at changing.
Yeah, well, this, this one is policy 713, which
Yeah, well, this, this one is policy 713, which applies to student activity counts, and this is a, this would be a quick turnaround, and we're going to ask you to approve it, rather than doing a first reading and a second reading. And the reason for that is the law goes into effect July 1. And we originally, when we were preparing for this board meeting, we took our current policy and we edited and altered it to meet the law because MSBA, the School Board Association, had not come up with a red line version yet, and they did, what, about a week or so ago?
Yeah.
So we then, they did, and so we took a look at that, and you'll see the changes, and as Sarah scrolls through, if it's blue, we added a change. We thought that just read better, but the red line, basically they're cutting out the other choice. There's a choice of one now. And then we've got some things just to continue down, some of the definitions, and then some of the rules, you know, we, we added, you know, blue there just to be very clear where, you know, this is under the direction of the district finance department. Rules and procedures will be established, and this is exactly what we do with every policy. You know, the, the school board at, at the governance level passes a policy, and then our department leaders and department folks and our building folks, they come up with rules and procedures, so just calling that out and clarifying it, but it matches the statute. Having read, read the statute, it matches the guidance from, you know, the accountants at Gatsby and the finance directors across the state. And to be honest, you know, if we're going to comply with the law, this is our one choice, and this is how we're, we're going to do it, and so.
I say we make a motion to prove that one.
Glad to hear that.
Does someone make a motion to approve that?
I'll second that.
Okay.
So I would make one quick comment. So if you read through that, it talks about the MFA manual, so the manual for accounting, whatever it means. There's, there was a group of finance directors, state department people, maybe some attorneys that probably worked on that manual for, and, and not that long ago, maybe three, four years ago, and maybe took them two, three years to get this manual in place, and now it's out.
And that was the other option. Even I knew about made the chapter 14, so that was pretty good, so I'm a little hurt.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
You're almost solo act here tonight. And we move on to number 10, other. Joe, let's start with you. Do you have something?
The only thing we had, we had the finance committee. Jeff basically went over everything, budget, everything, so next to that, no.
Personnel committee, tomorrow we have our training. We are doing training for negotiations, collective bargaining. We're doing it jointly with administration and representatives of the SHC Education Association. So.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, and it's here.
Yes.
I'm going to put that in my phone, so I can forget that one too.
And it's a good baseline, building in the spirit of collaboration to learning how to negotiate, figure out what's most important to all parties and how we represent, come to an agreement as to how to move forward. So looking forward to it. First time we've done it in this mass before, so I think it'll be a great learning experience.
Is there at some point where you also do it with other employee groups?
I believe SCA is the driver of this. I defer to Mike on that, but.
Yeah, it was really, you know, Dale Anderson, the president of the teachers' union, SCA, that brought the idea forward, and we worked with, you know, Keith Gray and HR and our personnel committee, and everybody thought, yes, this is a great idea. Doesn't, we wouldn't, we would certainly be open to doing it with other groups, and I don't even know for, yeah, yeah, in the future. Just, it's one of those where, you know, the more we learn together, I think the better we work together and, you know, work collaboratively on this, so I'm looking forward to, to learning with our personnel committee, our HR folks, and our teachers.
Sounds great.
I have nothing.
I have nothing tonight.
Audience here? Nothing from you? Jeff, don't you have something to say?
Come on, come on. Give me a cough drop or something.
Ladies, Sarah. We're up to you.
We have a school board communications committee meeting Wednesday at 4:00 before our facilities meeting. Policy coming up. Just got a policy made early 11. That's all I got. How good.
Mike, we're up to you.
Feel like I've spoken a lot tonight, so just, just happy to report that we're on schedule to close on our house July 1.
I'm busy getting out of moves, sorry.
Yeah.
Well, they're not moving till another day.
It's a different day.
Busy then too. No, I, I have things.
But it's been busy. We're closing on a cabin in Rice Lake, Wisconsin this Thursday. I'm taking off, what, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? My son moved from Chicago to Las Vegas for, for work, so we're going to go down and help him get settled in. That's all that's going on this week.
Boy, moving is your middle name.
Yeah, I thought I was getting out of that business. I pulled a lot of stuff around the last couple of weeks, so.
We should be pretty much next.
Good thinking, guys, pack up to Oklahoma.
We've been using that pickup.
Okay, and on that Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, when we're meeting for communications, after that, there's a facilities meeting, and we got quite a few things to cover there too.
I think I said the 24th. It's actually 26. The 24th is today.
Oh, it is.
26.
All right.
It's summer.
Okay, and we'll take a look at dates coming up. I think we've mentioned several of them here, so I don't think there's anything unusual there. Our summer retreat coming up, and of course, you received a list of some of the things that are going to be discussed. Looks like we have a full agenda for that here too. Anything else?
They never lack for content.
No, no. Other than that?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All right. Those who are in favor?
You didn't ask for discussion?
Oh.
Not, well, you know, do we, do we really need to go?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're finished. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.